To the Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board, would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the roll call of members, Michael Cardo Chair.
Gerald Cardo Chair.
Jesse, no alternate.
Russell Blanchett, member.
Travis Tucker, member.
Jeremy Robitaille, Secretary.
Okay, and absent this evening is Aletha Riley and Steve Gannon, our ex officio member. So I guess we'll have to appoint our alternate this evening, as is our alternate willing to take the voting position for Ms. Riley.
Yes, I do.
Okay, so we will make you a voting member tonight as an alternate. Public input on non-agenda items, items not listed on this agenda for this evening. Is there any public input on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, hearing none, I will close public input on non-agenda items. We'll go to number one on the agenda, which is an amendment to a previously approved site plan for a gas station and convenience store at Tax Map twenty-two, Lot eleven, five twenty-two Charles Bancroft Highway, owner Thoreau Development LLC. The amendment includes reduction in area of the proposed gas convenience store building by approximately six hundred sixty-four square feet, relocation of the underground storage tanks, revised drive aisle width near the vehicle fueling positions, reduction in paved surfaces nineteen percent, shifting the development away from the rear wetland. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yeah.
And I would ask the applicant to step forward, introduce himself to the board.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer with Hanner Swanson Inc., now IMAG, doing business at Three Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. Let me introduce all these people that are with me. Floyd and Justin Hayes are with Aranco, hoping they're the operator of this facility. Dave Clark is with Marquee Construction, in case there's any construction questions that came up, Dave was helpful in putting this package together. We know Renee Thoreau, Litchfield's finest, as the owner of the property. And Peter Marsh is with us tonight, and Peter is with New Hampshire Signs. And as just read into the record, we're seeking an amendment to a previously approved site plan of part property at five twenty-two Charles Bancroft. Many of you board members may recall, on May twentieth of this year, we appeared before you for conceptual discussion and kind of gave you the outline of the changes, took your temperature, and the Aranco team decided to move forward and pursue formal approval. The way I'd like to run the first part of this presentation is I'll give a quick overview of the site plan, just kind of a recap of the property, several board members.
So I think before we even get to that point, I think what we should do is do an acceptance of the amended plan for completeness. And then what I'll do is, once we take a vote on that, I'll have you make a presentation regarding the process. So we do have, Joan, do we have all the butters for this property been notified?
Yes.
And all fees paid?
June thirtieth, the butters were notified and fees have been paid.
Okay. And have actual plans been submitted to the town? Jay, you had an opportunity to review those plans?
Yes.
I imagine. Okay, and you are good with completeness of those plans as submitted?
Yes.
Okay. So I have butters notified, I have fees paid, I have the completed plans have been submitted, and Mr. Maccara has had an opportunity to take a look at them. And I'm going to say that there's probably, in terms of regional impact to this project, any regional impact? I don't see any regional impact, so I'm going to say there is no regional impact. Does it take a vote of the board to accept the application as to this amended site plan? So anybody want to entertain a motion at this time to approve, accept the plan for completeness?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Travis, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jared, any further discussion? All right, take a vote, all those in acceptance of the plan for completeness, please, for this project, Tax Map twenty-two, Lot eleven, five twenty-two Charles Bancroft Highway, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, anybody abstained, motion passes six zero zero. Okay, so the plan has been accepted for its completeness, now I'll allow the applicant to make his presentation.
Fantastic, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do is to give you a quick overview of the project, hone in on maybe some of the changes, and then I'm going to ask Peter Marsh to come up. Peter is going to talk a little bit about the pylon sign along the Charles Bancroft Highway, and a couple of the elements of the gas station, you know, vis a vis the canopy at the fueling position. So let me get started. You know, as I said, five twenty-two Charles Bancroft Highway, it's a fifteen-point-three acre site, and there we have it, aerial, really in the north part of Litchfield. In two thousand twenty-three, the Litchfield Planning Board approved a gas station convenience store, I may say C-store tonight, and self-storage development upon this property. And the plan included a fifty-five-hundred-square-foot building with automobile fueling positions, a drive-through lane around the back of the facility, an independent separate truck fueling location, and then self-storage units in the back half of the property. Our client this evening, Aranco, has recently entered into an agreement with Renee to develop the front part, which is the gas C-store part of the development. Aranco is a very experienced developer of this type of project, they currently own and operate approximately fifty such facilities here in New England. The plan that's up on the screen now is the plan we discussed on May twentieth, and it speaks to a number of the changes that we have gone back into this twenty-some-odd sheet set of drawings and formally made these changes. So I'll touch briefly upon them, because that's a nice graphic that shows the changes. First and foremost, the building is slightly smaller, we went from fifty-five-hundred down to forty-eight forty, about a six hundred and sixty less square foot, so just a little bit more compact building. As you can see, the building shifted, and the development program shifted in an easterly direction towards the Charles Bancroft Highway. This allowed for a greater separation to the wetland to the rear, and it also allowed for a reduction in a rather large retaining wall we had originally designed in the back of this site. So the building moves forward about sixteen feet, the front canopy moves forward about eight feet, but you can see the edge of pavement didn't change, that's just exactly where it is and where it was previously permitted. To the north, we're about eight to ten feet more compact than we were to the northerly property line. There's a revision to the drive-through lane. The original plan had some underground fueling in the front part of the site, so we had to spin a fuel truck around this building, but with the relocation of the underground storage tanks, that need is no longer there. So we were able to make a more compact drive-through lane behind the building, and that results in a pretty sizable reduction in overall pavement. Again, building is reduced, but in terms of paved surfaces, about nineteen percent in this part of the site, less pavement. The other items, the dumpster, the transformer, the truck fueling area located on the bottom of that sheet, utility connections, the total parking count, all of that stayed essentially the same, as did the storage unit in the back, Mr. Chairman, there's no proposed changes to the storage unit portion. So Jay, if you could just scroll through this graphics package, I'll ad lib for a minute here. That's the master plan, that's showing the new configuration in relation to the overall property and to the storage unit, so you have a feel for that. Next slide, please, Jay. And there's the, kind of the engineering site plan of the new building, and it's very, to the untrained eye, look quite similar to the previous plan, with the exception of those changes I just discussed. Nothing changed vis a vis the stormwater management area, even though we had a nineteen percent reduction. Couple drain pipes moved a little bit because of new curb lines, but in terms of the overall sizing and the overall intent of the stormwater management system, that did not change. Next slide, Jay. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the architecture before I turn it over to Peter. The revised building elevation that you're seeing, yeah, right, thanks, Jay, is, there it is there, what we've provided as the new elevation, and you can see it's almost identical to the previously approved one, whereas we have pitched roof, asphalt shingles, a canopied entry, cupola atop the roof. Exterior materials will be a stone base around the lower portions on all four sides, fiber cement siding or hardy plank type siding versus wood clapboards. And again, the drive-through remains essentially the same. Let's scroll down to the next one there, and you get a sense, Jay, of the comparison for that elevation. If you go to the next slide, please, that was what was previously approved. So I think the stone base is an added element architecturally, but overall quite consistent in terms of scale and massing. Let's continue to scroll, Jay. For the board's edification, this was a perspective of the previously approved plan, and you can see it's a view shed as you come in from the main entrance, you can get the sense for the building. That's the automobile fueling area, and of course, there's the pylon sign along the Charles Bancroft Highway. Next slide, please, Jay. There we go. There's a different view as you're traveling south, you can see the fueling positions. And you'll take note, it was presented and represented that it would be a mobile station, and that still was the case, as the provider of gas here, Aranco being the operator of the facility. And so you see some branding taking place with regards to the canopy, the signage, and some of the color elements that are typical of a mobile station. And keep going a second, Jay, there you go. Okay, so that's our new sign. And one more slide, please. And a little bit of detail on some of the elements of the canopy. So Peter's going to come up in a minute, and what Peter's going to do is going to talk about the pylon sign. I will tell you that the pylon sign that you're looking at is slightly larger than I think is allowed. If that's the case, obviously, we would need to go to the zoning board of adjustment for that, but we're trying to give you the sense of consistency with the previously approved sign here for the site. And then secondly, if you scroll back, Jay, actually, why don't you wrap up, just go all the way down and see what else I forgot. Peter's sense of what we have in the scroll, yeah, there you go. Elevation. Okay, thank you. If you could go back to maybe the colored perspective. And then the second thing Peter is going to discuss is, there you go, is the condition was put upon the original site plan, if I could approach the screen, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Of what's called the candy canes or a wave, it's these elements right here. And as the chair knows in the earlier discussions we had, there was some consternation about the color red, that is a mobile branded color, and Peter's going to talk a little bit about that. I think we're going to politely ask for maybe some reconsideration of that this evening, that color and that condition. So before I turn it over to Peter, with regard to the site plan, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the changes from either the board or staff on some of the elements we just walked through. I will say this, I've got Lou's comments, Lou's comments is always very reasonable. My testimony this evening is they can be easily addressed, and so if we get to the point of a condition that we need to satisfy Lou's letter, I'm happy to commit that we could do that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant regarding the gas station this amendment?
Now, I see this picture, and I know this is sort of a rendering, but where is the conservation area? I mean...
To the sheet right.
To the sheet right.
Yeah.
So, okay. So the, obviously, on this, this would be an entrance to the conservation area, but it's not, kind of, doesn't show it. But can you address the issue regarding possible, what you intend to do in terms of the, I guess, the buffer issue or trees or that sort of impact on the conservation area? I'm just curious how that's going to affect it.
Yep.
It's hard, I mean, in scale, and I understand this is a drawing and everything, but it's just, every time I go by that site, I always wonder how that's going to get impacted.
Okay. Jay's trying to find the landscape plan, I thank you for that, Jay. There it is. So from day one, we've known that the property directly to the north is kind of Litchfield alone land, conservation land, we've got the gravel parking lot. And as you get a little further into the property, there's a much bigger buffer, if I may approach, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sure.
There's a much bigger buffer, you can see, if you just smidge down just a hair. There's a much bigger buffer located as you get deeper into the area. There is a kind of a scrubby growth here on our property right here. The commission asked us if we could do our best to maintain that, it'd almost be like maintaining the understory if you look out back, there's just not a whole lot there, it's not a substantial buffer. But the plan does commit to trying to salvage that particular area. You'll also notice some supplemental landscape materials on the north side, and then more importantly, the commission did ask if we could provide a pedestrian connection from our site to the parking area, and I think it was with the hopes that if hikers went and did a walk and came back and their car was there, and they said, geez, you know, I forgot to bring water, I'd like to go get a water, they have a physical connection to get to the C-store. And so we've incorporated those buffer landscaping and pedestrian elements into the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before I, does anybody else have any questions before we go forward? Jay, do you have anything regarding this part of the presentation, anything that you want to address?
I was just going to ask if the applicants could address any potential impacts to the AOT permit or the DOT driveway permit?
Yeah, thank you, Jay. So the DOT driveway permit, I'm sensing Renee's efforts have brought us really to the one-yard line. In fact, I said to Joan and Lou outside before I came in that I've got no less than three emails on my inbox to respond to relative to kind of dotting the i's, crossing the t's with regards to the roadway improvements that are being proposed. Don't forget, we've got a roadway improvement associated with this project to provide a left-turn pocket traveling northbound into the development. And of course, when you do that, you've got to, you know, take that southbound traffic and kind of politely move it over so that the cars don't hit each other. So that's proven to be quite a challenging effort, that, with the sidewalks that are being proposed as part of that element, has brought us really, like I said, so close to obtaining a permit. These particular changes, I don't think have an effect or an impact on the DOT piece. On the AOT piece, because we're going in the right direction, Jay, we've downsized, we haven't really changed the key elements of treatment practices downstream, I'll probably by notice just shoot a copy of the site plan with a list of the changes to them. I doubt it will rise to the level of needing a formal amendment, but I'll certainly ask that from them. But I wouldn't make that a condition of approval, because they could take months and say, no, we don't need anything, I'd hate to delay us for that, but we'll notify them in advance.
In terms of stormwater, Joan, has the technical review committee had an opportunity to review this plan at all?
They talked about snow storage, and I showed them snow storage to the north there, there are two parking spaces there now. As far as the stormwater, there is a question on the AOT, June thirtieth, request for more information, who, they want to provide documentation from the town or state indicating that they will take responsibility for the maintenance of the BMPs that are located on private property, because there are some drainage areas to the east of the roadway that are on private property, and DES wants to know who's going to maintain those.
Okay. Has there been any discussions with the town and the applicant regarding that at all?
No, no, nothing I know of.
No, you know, we're not the designers of those roadway improvements, I'm not a professional traffic engineer, so the firm GPI is performing that design. As I said, they have been working through the DL pre-process really way back into the Renee days. It's a good question, Joan, I don't know the answer to it, but I can find out and send you an email, you know, who is the grantor, who's the grantee, what is the easement going to say?
Okay.
I'm assuming the DOT is not going to want to maintain anything. I think what Joan's alluding to is, because of the ad widened pavement, they created at least one, right?
One or two.
One or two small stormwater treatment cells before going into Leech Brook. They're on the east side and they're on private property, and the question is, well, who's going to maintain those? So I'll do my best to find that out, Joan, and let you know.
I did talk to the engineer at GPI previous, after we got this letter, June thirtieth, and he said the water going to Leech Brook will be more, treated more than it is now, so that was a good thing.
Well, there's no treatment now.
That's what he said.
Yeah.
Lou, did you want to address anything about stormwater or?
Most of the comments I have in my letter don't deal with the stormwater, because nothing has really changed, the stormwater management areas on-site haven't changed. The only thing that's changed is the amount of water flowing to them. So there was not a drainage report submitted, nor do I believe it was necessary. I just checked the size of the pipes that they were putting in on the site to compare them to what they were before, and had no issues with it. And all my other comments are kind of minor stuff, dot the i's and cross the t's. Certainly, there's an operation and maintenance requirement now by the town's regulations that were approved back in January of this year, should be submitted for both this project as well as the three-A widening. And I went down and looked at the site with the highway plans, the three-A widening plans. All the property being impacted on the east side of three-A is owned by Continental Paving. It's the site that got approved a few years ago, in the house to the north are both being impacted. And my biggest concern there, other than who's going to operate and maintain them, is the landscaping, because the Continental Paving came in and put in a beautiful row of eight or ten maple trees, and I think one of the stormwater management areas abuts the one that's out there today. They're not combined, they're separate, but the trees are going to go, so I'm thinking that somebody ought to be talking to Rick, he likes his trees, maple trees, not pine trees.
And just so, you know, you're aware, we did revise our, and I think you are aware, we did revise our stormwater management ordinance and regulations, so really have to make sure that the applicant is in compliance with those, and that at least if whosoever, if it's the town administrator or the building inspector, who's, I'm not the building inspector, but the road agent, either one, I think, you know, needs to, that certain things may have to be addressed, and I think there's an appendix attached to the stormwater management regulations, a appendix D, that outlines some of that, those requirements. Jay, you had an opportunity to take a look at those, right, and I think you forwarded them to the applicant, correct?
You were actually here at the hearings.
Yeah, I posed it vehemently. I lost that one.
Yeah, so just to be aware of that, because there are changes.
Yeah, it's, look, a project like this is not uncommon to have recommended best management practices for operation and maintenance, and truthfully, it's mostly just good common sense, keeping things clean, keeping an eye on it. Stormwater elements of a project are a system, and they need, like everything else, maintenance and somebody to watch them. So we often do O and M on projects, so to be able to provide that in these drawings and for Lou to review is totally, totally acceptable to us.
Okay. And we do have a copy of Lou's letter of July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, that addresses some of the concerns that he had and...
Yep.
Changes or anything, so, I won't read into the record, but obviously, you're aware.
Yeah, my testimony is, I've got the letter, and I feel comfortable we can readily address those comments, thank you.
Okay.
With regard to the maple trees, I know the owner, I'll speak to him about that.
They look beautiful.
Anything else, any other questions? Okay, we will open this up to public comment, but I think we'll be doing that towards the end, so if there's any questions that the public has, just keep them handy. I guess we'll move on with the next part of the presentation, so the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Peter Marsh, New Hampshire Signs, sixty-six Gold ledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. Just like to make a quick correction to the minutes. My last name is March, as in left, right, left, right, left, right, not Marsh, as in squish, squish, squish. So that being said, so we appear in front of the board February the seventh, twenty-three, and again on March seventh, twenty-three, regarding this development, and the project was put on hold, it's been assumed by Aranco. As Jim said, it's, Aranco is an experienced operator of patrolling gas stations all over this area, and is a primary mobile dealer in the area, but operates Sunoco and Sitco and a number of other brands, so they're very experienced in this regard. In our last discussion, we reviewed some of the elements on the site, and Jack, would you move to the ID sign, if you can find that one? Okay. So we talked to the board previously, we were trying to satisfy, to minimize the size of the sign, and we were doing that by putting an alternator in it or a toggle. The toggle basically was changing from cash price to credit price, and in doing that, what are the digits, we're serving cash price and also credit price. New Hampshire law says that we have to display the price of a gallon of gas and the condition attached to it in two out of three places. So the given is the dispenser itself, which has a display that does that. The next element would possibly be the pump toppers, and the third element would be the sign. The next element would possibly be the pump toppers and the third element would be the sign. So in this particular case, we have to satisfy that, we chose to satisfy that with a sign. And that means that every grade that is sold in the, in the station is actually displayed on the sign electronically. We know that we're oversized on this sign, we're allowed 64 square feet. We're, I think we're at about 80 or something like that. So we know that we have to go from the ZBA for that. But the sign really represents pretty well some compliance with what the board said. Because the board was really not very keen, if my memory serves me, on the sign alternating between cash and credit. So this is an attempt to satisfy that requirement. And obviously, if you have three tenants, we have to enlarge the sign to take those three tenants. Again, it's not substantially larger, but it definitely is larger. And again, it, it satisfies the boards want not to have that alternating technology. This is a standard mobile sign, they only really come in two sizes. This is one of the, this is the smaller size and this is what we're going to be asking the ZBA for. If you could move to the canopy, please, Jay. The canopy we're asking for is just a standard mobile blue canopy. The canopy signage, we're allowed 35% of the canopy area is signage. We're something like 0.069% of that, two small mobile logos on it, they are illuminated. And there is a light bar on the canopy that floods a gentle glow over the face of the canopy. It really serves to light the drip edge of the canopy, particularly with avoiding things like eye secretion. It helps people see any eye secretion that may happen on the pavement under the canopy. So the canopy is a pretty standard canopy, I mean, they're all over this area, very, very common. There's nothing really alarming or, or different about that. So when we talked previously, one of the things that we talked about was the synergy elements. Mobile has a, a program called Synergy. Gas stations in general are relatively dangerous places. And they're dangerous because people come in for a short period of time, they get out of a car, they walk to the, fill a cap, fill up. They may go to the C store to pay, they may go to the C store to buy chewing gum or whatever the case may be. When you have a gas station where people are coming in from both ends, that makes it significantly more dangerous. So the mobile synergy program, it's a promotional program. But it also serves to try and direct people into the station from a particular way. So in this particular case, we're trying to direct them from the Charles Bancroft side towards the C store. The synergy program is really suggestive, it's not, it's not a, it's not a, we're not telling people that they have to enter that way. It's not a one-way system, but the elements of the, of the synergy package are really designed to suggest that people move onto the, onto the pad in a particular way and they fill up in a particular way. If they're all facing the same way and the majority of them are going the same way, it makes a gas station a safer place. When we talked about the elements of the synergy package previously, Mr. Chairman, can I approach the screen?
There are basically four elements. This little element here is a pump number, it's a little triangular red pump number. It, it's designed to be seen by the cashier, so that if you walk up to the cashier, it's saying that pump, the cashier can look at it and work out what the number is. It's a tiny little element there. This element here is called a koala and I have a lot of larger handouts if members would like to see that. So the koala, basically, the idea of the koala is that it, it holds the safety information for the site. If you go to a lot of other brands, the safety information is plastered all over the poles of the, of the canopy. And it's fragmented and, and really cluttered, if you, if you like. So this koala is designed to hold the safety information. It can be used to hold promotional material or not, as the case may be. This here is the blade and the blade again serves to direct traffic onto the side. That serves to direct traffic once it's pretty well almost at the side. The wave here, which is an unlit red plastic monolith, it can be lettered or unlettered. That is the primary thing that people would see when they actually drive onto the side. I would point out that you're seeing that when you're on the side. You're not necessarily seeing it from the highway because you're looking at the end of it. The end of it is only about this wide. So the wave in particular allows people to look at, to, to look at the station as they drive onto it. And it suggests a particular direction of travel. As I said, they can be lettered or unlettered. If they're unlettered, they're really more like architectural elements than, than signage. So they, the real purpose is they promote part of the, the mobile brand synergy. They encourage a traffic pattern and they also reduce clutter. The sort of clutter you see on other brands with the labels all over the, all over the columns. And they're reduced to confine that to a particular space. And I think the last thing they decided to do is improve traffic safety. So they do improve traffic safety on the side. So the board approved everything last time but the waves. And I think the, obviously, that's a part of the discussion we're going to have today. It's the purpose of the waves and whether, whether the, whether the board would reconsider that part of the, of the plan.
And I do remember that discussion, particularly the board did not want to see, what do they call it, the candy cane or?
Yes.
Thing that, the red thing that, that companies that they, they didn't want that as part of the, of the gas station. I think a lot of it had to turn on, my understanding was, character of the town and rural, what the people were going to see, that it didn't look appealing. There were, there were definitely a lot of comments about that. I don't think I'm inclined to change that position, but this board certainly, you know, has the opportunity to reconsider it if it wants to. Any thoughts, anybody have any questions for the applicant regarding that?
So I have comments, so I do remember watching the board meetings when that was being discussed originally. It predates me being a board member. And since then, I've like looked at mobiles in the area. And like personally, I find the gas pumps themselves uglier than the candy canes. Which makes it so that I don't, I'm, I'm personally okay with them, but I'm curious what the rest of the board thinks.
It's all ugly, but gas stations are ugly. If you want a gas station, that's what we get.
Again, I don't think you're really going to see them from the road because you're going to be looking at, at them and on. Most of, most of the visual impact is going to be to people that are actually on the side. And it has a, that visual impact has a purpose, I'd argue.
You know, here's a visiting gas station, I've never picked up on those.
The queues that the signage directs you in a particular path.
Do you know, I, exactly, I'll tell you why, is because it doesn't. This is the first program of this type that tries to address the issue of people driving in and out from all directions. And it's, it's a, it is, is a safety issue. I mean, people, you know, so this is, you, you, the thing is, you can't really tell people, you've got to come in this way, you've got to go out that way. That in itself would probably lead to confusion, but this is an attempt to say, this is the way you should be going in. And I think the majority of traffic takes that queue and, and goes in on that particular way. Suggestive.
I'll take comments when we, when we get to them, thank you. So I know, I know another issue that came up from last time was the issue of the pitched roof. And I think one of the compromises to that, if, that, in our discussion, I think, regarding that was that if we weren't going to have a pitched roof, then I think some people felt that they didn't like the candy cane look. And so I think there was an issue regarding removing them and keeping the roof, a flat roof. That was my understanding from the last, when we had these plans originally. Jay, any comments, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, there, I mean, there was a lot of conversation around both of those issues, though, whether or not there could be a pitched roof of some sort on the canopy. And yeah, with the candy canes, we spent a lot of time on both of those issues.
That was my understanding, that it was really a compromise to work to allow for the applicant to do that, for the roof. But reading that said, anything else that you want to?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do the candy canes serve any sort of like structural reinforcement or is it just purely visual?
Ah, they're purely visuals.
So like if somebody wasn't paying attention and hypothetically they were to hit it, they would just not?
Well, they have ballads in front of them, so in general, the, every gas station has ballads protecting the, protecting the pad. And the ballads go in front of the, of the waves out. Have me calling them candy canes now as well.
That's how I remember them, being described. I always say that, my season. Well, I, I mean, I'm certainly not, I mean, I think my position, my personal position, not addition of the board, but my personal position is, is that we don't change it. But like I said, this is a reconsideration, this board can make its own determination what it wants to do. So just because I say I'm not in favor of it, doesn't mean that that's the end result. But it's, that's up to the will of the board. Any other presentations this evening by anybody for the applicant? All right, so if the board doesn't have any other questions at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If there's no other presentation by the, the applicant. Is there any members of the public here who wish to comment on the application this evening? I think you had a question, did you want to address it?
We're here as Aranco Oil Company. To answer your question, I agree with you 100% that pumps are ugly. However, the pumps we're putting into this particular location, there's only one other place in New Hampshire that has it. It's just installed in Bedford, New Hampshire on 101. They're flats, they're flat, they're flat pumps, it doesn't have all the ugliness that you're referring to. So we're not going with the traditional mobile pump like you see down the road on Brown.
Yeah, it's a more modern one.
Can I get your name and address on the record? Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public, public, and anybody have any other public comments that they want to make this evening regarding the application? Any other comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, so I'm not hearing any other comments for public comment. Do you have anything else, Mr. Petropolis, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. So at this time, I am actually going to close public comment, so there will be no further public comment at this point. So I'm closing it and I'm going to bring this to the board. What is the will of the board, what does the board wish to do? You have the amendment to the site plan, you've seen the plans, you've seen what is being considered here today. I'll entertain any motions, I'll entertain anything that the board wishes, that they would like to entertain. It's really going to be your decision whether you want to amend at this point and what you want to amend, so.
I guess I'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
So I am totally okay with the road sign being the size it has to be to meet the needs required by the state. I have no problem with that whatsoever, it's really, I can't think of a better way around that, I guess. I, for one, am also not super through, excited about having the flat roof canopy. Because I thought that was a big sticking point we have with the town, keeping the character of the town the way it was and having a more New England style roof above that. I could give or take the waves, candy canes, whatever you want to call them. I think they're a good mark, anything for mobile, I guess, but for me, I could take it, leave it, I don't care. So that's my two cents, I guess.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Joe, do you have anything you want to say?
So with that sign, with them wanting to go larger than our ordinances allow, are they, are they going to have to come to us? Or is it just, they can just get a, a variance and don't have, won't have to come back to us?
So, so there's two ways we could do it, is one, you could approve the site plan, you know, and accept the sign and they'd have to come back for the sign. Or you could, if, again, if it was the wish of the board to approve it, to approve it on the condition that a variance was granted for the sign. Otherwise, they'd have to come back.
Do we want to make that a condition of approval if we were to?
The current plan has probably the larger sign on it. So if we're going to approve this plan as it is, we probably would need to make that a condition.
Anybody have anything else, do you have anything, Jesse, anything, Russ, Travis?
I'm interested in Lou's letter, Lou's comments, because I didn't see that posted to our portal.
Well, actually, I just received it this evening, even though we just turned those down too.
Thank you.
Can you take a look at it for a minute? Travis, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way, I'm good with all the improvements. I would say, my personal opinion is I'm not a fan of the waves. I don't think they really do much to kind of direct traffic, particularly when people kind of have gas tanks on the opposite sides of their cars. So if it's not required, like the blade is, I would say no wave would be my opinion. So I, I wouldn't amend the board's previous decision. I would also say a sloped roof would be nice, particularly as there's like some others around. But I understand that there's kind of limited, we can do on that front.
I think the, from what I understood from the last, when we did the site plan, one of the things, the push for the, the flat roof versus the pitched roof was a liability issue regarding, you know, if, say, someone was getting gas and the snow fell or something or something happened, I think there was an issue by the applicant regarding liability. That was one of the reasons that they tried to go for a flat roof than a pitched, so. Anything else? So in terms of that, obviously, I think, you know, I think you're right. I think we have to make Lou's letter a condition of approval. The AOT issue, I think, if it were up to me, I think I would make it a condition of approval. I think once the applicant goes for the AOT, they can still go for it as long as they're conditioned that they will receive it. And obviously, they have to address some of the issues in that letter that was sent to the applicant regarding that. As well as the DOT. So that's just my, my take on it.
Could I speak to that, Mr. Chairman? If you'd allow me to, sir?
Typically, I don't, I mean, we, we did close public comment.
Sure.
And I don't think I'm going to. Um, and I don't think I'm gonna reopen it, I'm sorry. Um, I think it's gonna be in the will, hands of the board now, so, um. So what is the board's will? What do you want to see happen tonight? Do you wanna approve it? Do you wanna prove it with conditions? What do you want it to do?
Yeah, so it sounds like we'll need conditions, and we'll have to figure out what conditions we want to do.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's start, what are, what are the, so we have, what, Jay, can we?
So, um, yeah, so, submittal of the changes to NHD, ask for the, um, AOT, um, satisfactory resolution of the comments in the letter from the town's consulting engineer. Um, ZBA approval of the proposed, uh, road sign. And then whatever you wanna do with the candy canes, candy canes in, candy canes out.
I'm gonna recommend that they be out, but it's up to the board, what you guys wanna do.
I agree.
Okay, anybody else?
They don't really serve a functional purpose for me.
I don't care either way, any candy canes, so.
Okay, so, I don't think we're gonna go with the candy canes, though. Anything else? Um, I think we do, do need to, I mean, obviously, uh, technical review committee, the best management practices, uh, the letter.
Yes.
The town, I think that should be.
And the O and M plan was noted, um, in Mr. Karen's.
O and M plan as a condition of the approval. I think that's important, because I know that, um, you know, stormwater management practices.
And, and the standard conditions.
Standard conditions.
Did you want a letter from the technical review committee?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Given the circumstances, just so that we have it for the record. And at least they have something on record that says this is what they, their findings.
And on the AOT letter, um, can you address, can you just mention it's the June thirtieth date, twenty five?
June thirtieth date?
That's the date of the letter.
The date of the letter for the, okay.
Request for more information.
Okay. Request for more information. Okay, anything else? Oh, Lou, sorry.
Yeah, there was one thing I talked to Jim about, adding on sheet eighteen, there's a, there's a note about doing a report to DES. If they disturb more than five acres, they have to hire their own inspector to go out and check erosion control stuff. And they send an email to DES, and my recommendation would be to just add a note to copy the email to planning board. Planning board can distribute it to whoever needs to know in the town, road agent or administrator, whatever.
Fair enough.
Then, then the trees, uh, as part of the Route three eight widening, you know, the, the plants that were submitted for the widening were kinda really limited to the roadway itself. But if you look out there, it's very attractive, I mean, the place is extraordinarily well-kept. And I, and I think one of the stormwater management areas is gonna wipe out a good portion of those maple trees.
Okay.
How would you phrase that as a condition?
I'd say it, it's just a conti- you know, you're still open for review comments on that, 'cause it was never addressed in the highway plans, the GPI plans. All they showed was, this is the easement we need for the stormwater area, and, and the existing condition did not show the trees there.
So is that something that the, they have, would have to present to the state, or?
I don't think the state cares, really, it's off, not on their property, it's off-site, you know?
Yeah.
Been there, but, and maybe it's gonna be addressed in the easement language of whoever is signing off on the easement.
Okay.
But it is, you know, you get concerned about landscaping, right now, it's attractive out there.
Okay.
Drop half those trees down, it's gonna make a difference.
Um, I think we're gonna have to make, um, you know, obviously, part of the condition that easement language or language be approved by, or looked reviewed by town council, would that be something that would?
I, I, I would, I, that would have to have been a condition of approval, but we could.
What, what of the original plan, right?
Yeah. But we could certainly reaffirm that.
Just, yeah.
Well, the original plan didn't have the widening yet.
Right.
Okay, but it, uh, well, i- if it didn't have a condition on easements, we could certainly add that now. So review, satisfactory review and approval of easements language, uh, by town council.
I think we should do that. Anything else?
Are there any other, um, conditions from the prior, um, site plan approval that would need to be expressed in this?
Carried over?
Everything that was in the prior approval that wasn't expressly changed here would still stand.
So, I mean, yeah, it would stand the same.
Well, with that AOT permit, that, um, specifically that number seven on the AOT, request for more information, they wanna know who's going to maintain those drainage structures that are on private property. And I think Jim had mentioned he has a lot of input at his desk to go over and to see who's going to be doing that.
Is it necessary for us to add a condition for the maintenance plan to be?
Well, that was a, that was a question that, um, New Hampshire DES had, provide documentation from the town or state on who will be maintaining.
And that was, uh, Lou also raised the O and M plan, so that's gonna have to be provided.
Right.
And, and that should include those offsites as well.
Would that be addressed by the, um, condition of the addressing concerns from the town engineer?
My, my comments here were strictly for the site plan, not the three A widening. But the state asked for the same thing in the three A widening.
So we can clarify that we wanted them for both.
Anything else? Does someone wanna make a motion?
So looking at the con- my list of the conditions we've discussed, um, the candy canes removal plan was a condition of the prior.
Right, so that was the original.
So that can be carried over, doesn't need to be explicitly addressed here.
Yeah. Right.
Um, the standard conditions of approval are obviously a part of the prior ones, we don't have to address that either. So we had variance from the ZBA for the proposed road sign, uh, addressing all concerns from our town engineer. Um, submittal of the, we discussed submittal of the changes to New Hampshire DES for the, was it the AOT?
For the AOT, yes.
Yeah, for the alteration train permit. Um, satisfactory review and approval of easements by town council, was it?
Including the offsites.
Um, including offsite changes.
Including what, the?
Um, all conditions of approval from the original site plan.
I think you probably would wanna have it as a condition that the, um, I'm calling them the candy canes, that the plans are amended to remove them from the plan, you know, that the plans are amended to remove those because they are in the plan set now.
Were they not in the plan set for the original?
They weren't in the final ones before, but the, what you had, the, in the plans that you have in front of you now, they're in, so you just might wanna be clear that if you don't want them, that they come out.
So would that be called exclusion of the, what would be the proper?
Just that they be, I would just say that the, uh, plans be amended to eliminate. I'm, I'm forgetting the term that was used.
Let's use the most proper term for that.
Wait, waves?
Let me scoot down, it's in here.
Synergy waves?
Something like that.
Oh, no, I got the, if you want him in there.
Mobile synergy wave.
Synergy wave.
Synergy wave.
Received, but.
Okay?
No.
And then, uh, submittal, uh, uh, would, would we need a separate one for submittal of the maintenance plan for both the onsite and offsite, um, changes? Or drainage?
Say that again, Joe.
Would it be a submittal of a maintenance plan for, um, the onsite and offsite drainage?
Operation and maintenance plan. Yeah, I would say, I would be explicit because Lou said his letter does not include the offsites.
So, uh, for the onsite and offsite, um, what would we consider those, um, the, the changes or the, um, the drainage?
Uh, it's the operation and maintenance plan for, um, uh, both onsite and offsite drainage systems.
Could be developed, in general.
Okay, uh, unless someone else would like to make a motion, I have the.
I think you have great na- great notes, Jared, I want you to go for it.
Yes, of, uh, conditions here, um.
I make sure to include Lou's comments, so.
Uh, yes.
And the TRC letter and the DOT plan.
And the TRC, technical review committee.
DOT plan.
So we want a specific one for the technical, uh, addressing concerns of the technical revi- or, uh, reviewers, are there already concerns, or are they gonna give it a final review?
Do you know, Jared? Are there already concerns, are they gonna give it a final review, the technical review committee?
I, I don't think there were any concerns, they looked at it last week.
So just a final review by the technical review committee?
I think that was the final review.
I think they're gonna submit a document.
Hopefully, they would submit a letter, right? Now, um, Jay had mentioned that the previous plan would still be in place. Um, Lou had mentioned that the Warren Street drawings were in the previous plan, but not in this plan, do we need them in this plan? The, um, architectural showing.
There are eleven sheets that were in there, like perspectives from the distance, looking different, but they were just in a set. And when I looked to compare, I went, ooh, there's something missing here. So, that was missing. Now, I don't know if you really want them in there or not, that's the question. The approved set.
Yeah. Um.
Well.
Were they part of the original?
Yeah.
Plan, are they, are they being affected by the amendment?
No.
No.
So I wouldn't. I guess, uh, yeah.
Um, so what would the proper, um, condition be for the technical review committee, um, concerns or review?
The, what would the technical, what, what?
W- so, do we need a condition?
They didn't have any concerns.
They didn't have any concerns, so.
So they should submit a letter to.
As a receipt of a letter from the technical, technical review committee.
So it would be a receipt of, of a letter from the technical review committee specifying that there are no concerns.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, any other ones? Like, I think you mentioned two after I listed them off earlier.
The, the DOT permit issued.
So th- that's, yeah, that's from the original, right?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, I meant, still in there, that's under the standard conditions.
That's still, yeah.
And you mentioned, um, satisfactory resolution of, you know, any issues ra- raised in the town's consulting engineer's letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I told him about.
Now, what about the maple trees in the drainage area? Is, is that a consideration, or should, have you looked at, what, what do you, how do you wanna ma- say that?
Like, I'm assuming, um, if it, if those trees were planted by, um, Rick, that I'm assuming he's gonna do something about it, whether or not we require him to or not.
Well, the, the question is, did they stay, or the, are they going to be taken out because the, the drainage basin has to go there?
What do you, what?
The, the plans as shown do not depict these trees, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of brought their eyeball in and look at the plans, and I looked at it, and I went, yep, there's some of these that are, gotta be.
You think it was oversight or just lack of drawing in the plans?
I don't think the state cared.
It, it feels like, you know.
Are they in the town right of way, or are they in the conservation?
No, they're on, they're on private property.
I mean, it feels like that might be an issue, but I'm not sure it's related to the changes that are proposed for this site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's part of the, a concern, that's all.
No, I understand.
So should there be a condition that, um, we carry forward conditions from the prior, um, from the original site plan?
That are not, yeah, that are not affected by the amendment?
You could just make it clear that all conditions, you know, um, of, of the previous approval, not specifically amended herein, remain in effect. The waivers granted previously remain in effect, the variances and special exceptions that were previously granted remain in effect. The offsites remain in effect, so all of those things remain in effect, it's, it's really just what's specifically changed in the proposed amended plan.
So, um, conditions, and what, what else carries forward? Should be explicitly mentioned?
I mean, it's really any conditions or, you know, um, you know, any aspects of the previously approved plan that aren't specifically amended herein remain in effect.
Anything not inconsistent with the original plan? In terms of the stormwater, do we just wanna mention that, you know, alliance with, is it amendment D or of our regulations?
They'll be getting a letter from the town with a cover letter
Okay.
and explaining the, um, EPA MS four and a link to the stormwater, uh, Penix D. They'll send that to engineer and the two applicants.
Anything else?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Should I review this one more time before we make the?
You can certainly do that, yeah.
So variance from the ZBA for the proposed road sign, addressing all concerns from our town engineer, Lou. Um, submittal of changes to NHD, ask for the alteration terrain permit. Uh, satisfactory review and approval of easements by town council, including offsite changes. Uh, all, um, plans to be, uh, the plans to be amended to eliminate the mobile synergy waves. Uh, submittal of an operation and maintenance plan for the onsite and offsite drainage systems. Submittal of a letter from the technical review committee specifying that there are no concerns. And, uh, all aspects, uh, all conditions and aspects from the original approval remain in effect uh, for, um, cha- for everything not explicitly changed or, uh, amended in this plan.
Good, okay. So you're entertaining, there is a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I will do that. So, um, so I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the, uh, amendment to the site plan for, uh, the gas station and convenience store at Tapsmat twenty-two lot eleven, uh, five twenty-two Charles Bancroft Highway. Um, uh, with the, uh, conditions, um, that were just discussed.
Okay, alright, um, anybody have any other questions, or, I, I should say, uh, do I, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Call second jar's motion.
Second by Jeremy. Any further discussion, any questions, anything else you wanna address? Before we take a vote? Alright, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, uh, as to the amendment to the, uh, gas station and convenience store at Tapsmat twenty-two lot eleven, five twenty-two Charles Bancroft Highway, with conditions as so stated, um, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, anybody abstaining? Alright, motion passes six zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, thank you.
Think I should email, um, the list of, yeah.
I definitely would. Yep.
Where should I send that to?
That will get Joan, and get also to the, uh, secretary, the guy that doesn't know us.
Yeah, and also Jay, you can see, see the secretary.
I think I got them all, but it's good, send his email, yeah, send his email, there was a lot of them.
Okay, moving on, um, thank you, Lou, for your help. Um, planning board budget two thousand twenty-six, I, last meeting, we, uh, passed around the budget for, um, two thousand twenty-six for the official planning board. My understanding is, um, that budgets are go- coming up, but they're gonna be reviewed or have to be submitted by?
It's due, it's due July twenty-eighth.
July twenty-eighth, um. July twenty-eighth, um, and I believe they're gonna have hearings starting in August.
Yeah, I think your hearing is, I think, August eleventh.
Eleventh, that sounds about right.
Positive on that date, but.
Um, did anybody have any questions about the budget, any concerns, um, I mean, I think, I don't think there's a, a lot that will change, but if anybody has any questions, certainly this is the opportunity, um.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
There's not much to, to cut or, or grow, it's, it's a lean budget.
Yeah.
Looks like it's defensible, we can certainly take it to the budget committee and say this is what we need to fulfill our, our duties.
Wow.
Okay, um, so if there's no issues with it, then that's what it'll be, um, going forward, I guess we'll let, um, the town administrator know, um, that I guess we don't have any issues with it, and, um, we can, we'll move forward with it and, um, submit it as a proposal. Joan, do, uh, do you want us to send the, I guess we really don't have any issues with the, uh, the budget, so can they just send it to Kim?
So send, something to Kim, yeah, please.
All right, uh, moving on, committee reports, any reports from any committees? I guess I'll start with economic development, Jeremy.
Sure. Uh, so as I mentioned last meeting, um, we had a good meeting a month ago with the econ- economic development committee, and they tasked me with asking you guys, any thoughts you have that might help us streamline the process for development in town? Um, or as comments in general as far as the path we're currently going down. So if any of you have any asks at all, please let me know as soon as possible. Uh, our next meeting is going to be on, I believe it is, yeah, July thirtieth at six thirty, uh, right here. And that's all I have for right now, uh, also, I guess the last time, we're working on a rough draft of a proposal for the board of selectmen at this current time, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, Jay, anything, um, from economic or NRPC?
Uh, no, nothing yet, we, uh, executive committee decided to take July off, a lot of folks are doing, which is very nice, so. Next executive committee meeting will be in August and all commissions in October.
Okay, very good. Um, I attended the lower Merrimack local river advisory committee meeting, um, a couple weeks ago. Um, looks like they're gonna try to attempt to make it a consistent, you know, every fourth Thursday of the month. So, um, I think our next meeting is gonna be the fourth Thursday in August. And we're gonna see if we can kind of revive some of that, um, of the committee, um, making more of an effort to have more meetings. Um, I think we, we kinda shied away from that and I think we're trying to come back, so. So there's a lot of stu- new stuff with that and I think, um, should be interesting, we'll definitely keep you posted on what's going on with that. Um, conservation commission meeting was last, uh, Thursday, uh, here in town hall, um, but there, um, and the capital improvement committee is meeting August fourth. Um, and I guess we're gonna see, uh, I guess by that time, there should be some, uh, submissions from department heads and, uh, boards and so forth, so. Looking to see what's gonna happen there. And I think that is all I have for committee reports. Approval of the July first two thousand twenty-five minutes, do you even have an opportunity to take a look at those? Have any questions, comments? Concerns?
Yeah, I didn't see anything except for a minor grammatical thing, which is not worth changing.
Okay, okay.
Uh, call to order, you called the meeting to order? According to the minutes, that was.
Um, it says you were, uh, oh yeah, it says that the chair was in attendance, so.
Right.
Hmm. Yeah, you were in.
I was here, yeah, for that meeting.
You, you did that for that meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that could ju-
So should that say, should that say, Michael called it?
Correct.
Yeah, say chair, Michael.
Right. Anybody wanna entertain a motion to approve them, mm-hmm?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the July first minutes of the Litchfield Planning Board for the addendum that Joan was gonna make.
Okay, I have a motion by Jeremy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Um, any further discussion on minutes? I will take a vote. All those in favor of approval of the July first two thousand twenty-five minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes six zero zero. Any other business this evening? Joan, do you have anything?
Um, well, yes, Jay's not going to be here August fifth, uh, the next meeting, so.
I realize I'm gonna be at a conference.
Yeah, okay.
Do you wanna move the hearing to August fif- I think it's the fifteenth, nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Oh, the public hearing for, um.
There'd be objection to moving.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
No objection, no.
And then I have a, um, a lot line adjustment that I'm, I'm sure they, they wouldn't be opposed to moving a couple weeks to August nineteenth.
Okay.
So then there wouldn't be anything on August fifth.
So I think for the public hearing, we do have to take a motion to move it, the date.
Yes.
Yeah.
Time certain, so anyone wanna entertain that motion to move it to the nineteenth?
So moved.
Motion by Jeremy, second.
Second.
Second by Travis, any further discussion? All those in favor of moving, um, the public hearing, um, to August nineteenth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, abstained, motion passes six zero zero.
Aye. And then so.
So you could take the fifth off.
Yeah. So what, I'm sorry?
Do you approve of that, to take the fifth off?
Oh, you're gonna, oh, okay, so.
The outline one also.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I have no problem moving.
Moving that one, yeah, um, so you, you're not gonna have, uh, a meeting in August, is that what you're saying?
Up to you.
We, do we have any business?
No.
Oh, okay, does anyone object?
I'm feeling very moved, so.
What's that?
I'm feeling very moved to not have a meeting that day.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll take it.
Yeah, I enjoy the free air conditioning.
Yes.
But in an office.
An office would be good.
All right, so you guys get a vacation, a little mini-vacation.
I just have, um, comments from Kim Kleiner regarding the, um, hearing, so if you wanna pass those around, that would be good. I put them on the.
Look at Jay.
Um.
Okay, thank you.
I put them on the portal for the night, I did send, uh, an email, but may have a hard copy. And that's all I had.
Okay, so great, we can, we'll take a look at these and certainly address them.
My nose is on my breath, thank goodness.
So, are these, so these do address, um, the changes for the, um, things that we have a public hearing on, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we can take it in as testimony for the public hearing and address them.
Okay.
At that time.
Perfect. If we need to make any changes, that will mean we'll have to have a second public hearing?
If we make any changes, yeah, some of them are just questions, so, but if they result in changes, then yes, we would have to make a se- have a second public hearing.
Hopefully, if the wording is just weird, then we can make a non-substantive change?
If it's just, you know, clarification, not changing the substance, yes.
We've certainly had regulations proposed where we've had several changes and several public hearings, so that can happen.
Yeah, that's what the public hearings are partially for.
Exactly, yeah. Anybody have anything else? Jay, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Anybody have anything else?
I just had one quick question on the, uh, site plan, like, flow chart situation, I know last time someone flagged on the second page, it says evaluate for L U C T if yes, and we just weren't.
Right, it's just in the minutes.
Oh, yeah, and Kim Kleiner actually sent an email, um, clarifying what that was, that was the, um, land use change tax, that's what it's, the term is meant to represent, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you to Kim for watching the meeting, catching that we had that question and responding.
That's awesome.
That's what that was.
That's someone's watching us.
Yeah. All right, um, if there's nothing else this evening, I entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Travis, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstain, motion passes six zero zero. So it looks like we won't be meeting till the nineteenth of August, so enjoy your vacation. Mini-vacation. Um, so we'll see you then, have a good evening and enjoy your summer.